This meeting for your special city council here on March 25th, 2020. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
President.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shontman.
Here.
Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is new business discussion around the possible first reading of emergency ordinance regarding the novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health crisis. Ron, I'll take it off to you to tell us about the two versions.
Speaker Mayor, I had provided yesterday to the council members two versions of an ordinance regarding the COVID crisis. As I had promised the council, the two versions represent two different styles. One is, the first version one that you're seeing on the screen right now is the version that we're seeing some of the, several of the municipalities starting to pass around the state. The South Dakota Retailers Association has recently put out a, put out a kind of a status update on what's a lot of cities are doing, but we know that Rapid City, Yankton, Watertown, Mitchell, Huron, others have adopted an ordinance that runs along the lines of what you're seeing on the screen here. And that ordinance does require closures of certain of the businesses identified in the ordained portion of the ordinance. Paragraphs one, two, three, and four, and then number five identifies what is not being closed. And then version two, I'm sorry, the version two is a version that I drafted following Governor Noem's executive order 2020-08 that was issued Monday, late afternoon. And that has similar language in the recitals portion, but you'll see in paragraphs one and two have been modified to hew more closely, in my opinion, to the executive order of Governor Noem. What I would like to do before we get into a discussion of this is clarify for the council what I think our responsibility will be here as, as we, if we formalize something tonight. Typically, we are able to post with the agenda 24 hours in advance, a, an agenda packet that would include a draft of a proposed ordinance so that, so that the public would have an opportunity to have reviewed it and, and offer any comments and attend. I did not initially include these draft ordinances in when I sent this off and when, when it was posted, so these, these draft ordinances were, were only made to the public just this morning. So we're going to take the unusual step. I think that if, in the event that we do, well, we do actually have one member of the public here that I can think of, a few others, but we were, I would request that if, if in fact, we are in a position where we are looking at a, a first reading of the ordinance, the mayor would ask the members of the public if they would like it actually verbally read out loud, or if they would be satisfied with the copies that we've provided for everybody in advance at, at the meeting. So I just want to keep that in mind as we're going through this.
You're talking about the two present members of the public?
Yeah, yeah. That you would ask the members if they would care to have it read out loud, or if we can essentially dispense with reading and just move forward with, with, with any final action of the council on any, on any adoption for first reading of any, of any ordinance tonight. So.
Can I just interrupt? I would suggest that we would do it anyway, whatever version we kind of land on, that it would be read for the public that's watching and for the people that are here.
So, and again, I.
Let's just do it because it's a pretty important issue.
Yeah, we should do that because we haven't been able to do the follow, the traditional public notice that we would do in ordinary circumstances. So with that, I would like to walk through the, the two versions at this time with the, with the council and explain the effect of each, and then I would back off and let you folks decide how you want to approach this. So we're looking here at version, we'll start with version one. And I guess what I will tell is, is that the beginning portions of it, the whereas portions, we call the recitals. And the recitals are what we are seeing typically throughout all these other ordinances within the state, but what they're doing is they're, they're identifying, number one, the, the state of emergency, both national and South Dakota's declaration of emergency, identifying that there presently exists a need for an emergency ordinance that affects the life, health, property, or public peace, lays out the COVID virus disease, disease itself, and the potential deleterious impacts it has on, on human health, identifies the actions of various organizations, World Health Organization, Center for Disease Control, Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health regarding the outbreak, and of course, the declarations by both President Trump and Governor Noem of the state of emergency. And then the recitals go on to identify that social distancing is the method that the CDC and health experts are recommending to help slow the spread of the virus, and identifies that many states and communities are implementing the CDC recommendations by ordering closure of bars, restaurants, food courts, similar establishments, that many Aberdeen residents have voluntarily instituted social distancing measures. And I want to point out to, to the, any viewing audience that we have here, we have tried as best we can to space the council members within that six feet. We've, we've taken measures here in the, in the room to, to have the public seating spaced at the six feet recommendation so that, so that we aren't in our, in and of ourselves in violation of the CDC guidance at this point. And so the recitals then devolve down to a final exercise of the city council's authority by state law and under its charter to enact a, an emergency ordinance and to take measures to address the public health crisis. Beginning at paragraph one, then, of version one of the ordinance, we see again what many of the other cities in the state are doing. They begin, number one, with a, with a closure of establishments like restaurants, bars, cafes, other similar places of public accommodation where they offer food and beverage for onsite consumption. And they are closing the onsite sale and consumption of these establishments. They're allowing these businesses to operate, to take out, to do, to provide takeout, delivery, curbside, drive, service, and drive-through service. And then it says also that any business that does operate those services should ensure social distancing and operate in compliance with federal and state health guidance. Number two also discusses the closure of recreational facilities, pools, health, and fitness facilities, and clubs, social clubs, fraternal organizations, and other types of facilities for mass gatherings, including music entertainment venues and theaters. And they're directed to close and cease operations. Paragraph three deals with tobacco shops, lounges, hookah lounges, similar businesses directed to cease allowing onsite consumption, but may continue to offer products for sale to consume offsite under the same conditions. Number four closes and ceases operations for pool halls, video game arcades, video lottery, casino operations, bowling alleys, ice skating rinks, and other similar indoor recreational or entertainment facilities. Paragraph five then permits the continued activities of places of public accommodation that offer food and beverages for offsite consumption, like grocery stores, convenience stores, drugstores, food pantries, other similar businesses, and permits the continuation of room service in hotels, continuation of healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, and correctional facilities, permits the continued operation of crisis shelters, homeless shelters, churches, soup kitchens, or other similar institutions, and any emergency facility necessary for the response. So then that is, those are the provisions for, for closure and for exceptions to closure. The next paragraph was requested by the mayor and councilman Bunsonis for, which would require continued and vigilance on the part of the council to, to assess the continued necessity of the ordinance by sunsetting it on the day after any regular or special meeting. And I would offer at this time that where you see my cursor, where it says shall be repealed on the day following a regular or special meeting, I would request that that be changed to each regular or special meeting. So basically, every single regular or special meeting that the council would have during this crisis, and for the next 60 days if this is the enactment of it, you would be required to pass a resolution affirming both the continued, continued existence of the public health emergency and the necessity of the social distancing measures set forth in paragraphs one through four above. So what that means is that this council would need to affirmatively act at every council meeting to have this discussion continue to weigh the necessity of the ordinance and by resolution extend it till the next, till the day after the next regular or special council meeting. And you can do that up to a total of 60 days, and on the 61st day, because this is an emergency ordinance, it would automatically be repealed. That would allow, if, if the crisis continues and these measures are necessary, the council would then have to enact a new ordinance to continue these. It gives the ordinance a little teat by putting the violations as a class-two misdemeanor. And then lastly, it recites the requirement for a ordinance under these conditions as, to preserve the public peace, health, or safety. So that was version one, quickly and in a nutshell. Version two, excuse me, has the exact same recitals, and, but however, is changed in a significant way based upon the governor's executive order. And paragraph one says that "any enclosed retail business operating as a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casino, coffee shop, recreational, or athletic facility, health club, entertainment venue, or other similar place for public gatherings shall, A, not permit 10 or more people to be in the enclosed facility where there is not sufficient space to have physical separation of at least six feet between persons who are not immediate family members or members of the same household, and B, discontinue business practices incompatible with CDC hygiene practices designed to reduce the likelihood of spreading the COVID-19 disease." So let me explain that, and I'm going to send the council to the actual executive order. This is Governor Noem's executive order.
I can't see this camera.
Can you see that? Okay. And paragraph, excuse me, paragraph 11 discusses enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings. So that language that I just read to you is basically taken out of her executive order. And that executive order says that, that "any enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering shall suspend or modify business practices as recommended by CDC guidance that involve 10 or more people to be in an enclosed space where physical separation of at least six feet is not possible." So that is where that language is coming from. I should also inform the council that the caveat I made here is that between persons who are not immediate family members or members of the same household, because those folks have already been exposed to the same risk that, that the other person has. So, so what that means is that, we'll just use an example, if a restaurant were to remain open and provide in-room dining, you could have a family seated at a table because they've all been exposed to one another. So they're not, they're, they're fine as to each other, but they can't be within, they have to have a six feet separation from any other person who is not a member of that family or a member of that household. And then the ordinance as I drafted says that you must discontinue business practices incompatible with CDC hygiene practices. And Councilman Remley mentioned on Monday that we had some bars that were taking out the popcorn machines and the, and the barrels of peanuts. Those would be very good practices to do because those would be inconsistent with CDC guidance for hygiene practices. So that is language that again is coming out of, of Governor Noem's executive order. And it then goes on to say that these businesses are encouraged to adopt and promote practices that do not involve public gatherings in an enclosed space, including but not limited to takeout, delivery, drive-through, curbside service, and offsite services. And those again, that language again is right off of paragraph 12 of her executive order. "Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering shall implement procedures to ensure social distancing and operate in compliance with federal and state health guidance." Lastly, "these businesses may submit such procedures to the city health officer for review." And the reason for that is that under paragraph 18, the city is directed to review the business practices of each enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings. So we are trying through this language to navigate the various requirements of the, of executive order 2020-08. Number two is part of the paragraph 17 of her order, which, which requires local governments to restrict public gatherings of 10 people more unless it is necessary. So we have paragraph two that says that "any public gathering of 10 or more people is prohibited" where there is not sufficient space to have physical separation. So we use the same language that we had earlier. So to the extent that there's a public event where, where you have 10 or more people coming together and they cannot have the space, whether it's one of these identified businesses or not, they're, they're not able to continue to have that public gathering. Paragraph three is a, just a recitation of what we saw in the first version for, for organizations, groups, activities, and businesses that are not impacted by, by this requirement. And then again, the same language for the sunsetting as an active measure by the council. So those very quickly are the two differences between the two ordinances. And I wanted to say again that in either version, I would request that the word "A" in the second sentence of the, of the provision regarding repealing be changed to "each," so it's, has to each regular or special meeting in the city council. I believe that what I can tell you about version two is that I don't see, I don't believe that, that any other city in the state is dealing with a version like, like two because they haven't, I don't know that they, they were already in the process, they're already adopted ordinances prior to the executive order being, being delivered to the public. So version two that we have there would be new, unique to Aberdeen. We'll see what other cities are doing. I can tell you that we know that a number of other cities have adopted the ordinance that's, that's much more closely aligned to, to version one. We also have a number of cities that are kind of holding in place and urging businesses to follow the directive issued by Governor, Governor Noem. So those, those would be, that would be my presentation on, on these two ordinances at this time.
Thank you, Ron, and thanks for the quick work on it. I know that you were directed to do this just Monday of this week, and it's the fastest I've seen you whip together two ordinances. So I think first and foremost, I think it's important that everyone realize that we are taking seriously the welfare of the people and also the importance of the small business community. You know, I think that we need to commend the voluntary cooperation of most of the small businesses in this community. In fact, when I was speaking to the mayor of Brookings, they didn't even need to produce one of these because they had 100% voluntary compliance, and we're awfully close to that here at this stage in the game with a couple of new additions today. I also think that we should thank the people of the community for so carefully following the guidelines and recommendations of both the CDC and the state, because it's through those efforts that a lot of this stuff isn't, isn't even necessary. Most people in this community are doing exactly what they need to do to help prevent the spread of this virus through our city. So I'm going to open it up to comments from other council members that we might have. Mr. Bunsonis?
I would just ask that we settle on a, a version before we get into comments.
That's a good idea.
And I would recommend version two. It's less, you know, I know, I have an issue with closing down businesses as version one states, but I'm, so I'm much more comfortable with giving businesses the opportunity to comply with, with what the governor has, has told us as acceptable practices.
Right, and I think that that's exactly my take on it as well. Mandates that businesses temporarily modify their practices to follow state guidelines, and I think that that's what most have already chosen to do voluntarily. I think that, you know, allowing some of these guys, especially the ones that are catering to very, very small audiences and are probably just hanging on the verge of, of financial collapse, especially I think we need to, you know, take consideration into the fact that those folks are, will have plenty of space to allow for the proper social distancing and so forth. So I agree, version two. Can we get a straw poll on that?
Do you have a motion?
Why don't, yeah, make it official to push it.
I will move version two.
Shall we, should we have that read specifically, the ordinance number? Because there are some confusing numbers there, just so that we're clear.
Okay, I move ordinance number 20-0302, COVID-19 emergency ordinance number one.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Reif, all in favor.
That would, that would be first reading of that version.
A motion from Dave and a second from Josh. Councilman Ronain.
You know, I, it might be early to.
Rob.
Sir.
Microphone.
It's on, but this is Remley's, so I don't know.
I speak louder. And does karaoke.
I'll pull it, I'll pull it closer. I would like to move a very technical amendment to it. Ron, I think the date that you're showing this to be effective is March 1, and you were presuming we would have a first reading on yesterday and a second reading next Tuesday. And so I think I would move to, to amend the effective date to April 2. I think that's in the first, I think it's in the first paragraph of the actual.
So first reading would be March 25th, which is.
Can I, I can ask the council to please disregard the, what's in brackets.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the, about the first, the dates of the first reading and so forth. Within the body, you have the, the effective date.
Oh, do I?
Yes, sir.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It says effective 12:01 a.m., Wednesday, April 1st.
Also in brackets.
I put that in brackets as well because I wasn't sure. As we walk through this process, we can, if, if in fact you do it tonight, then I can pull up a, a calendar for you so we can plug in dates there.
Okay, so we don't need the dates in as far as you're concerned.
At some point here in this process, we should make, we should amend it to, to have the proper dates in. Do we want to do that right now?
That was my motion.
Okay, okay.
Second. Once we get the dates.
I have a motion from Rob and a second from Clint in order to establish firm dates on the language throughout the ordinance to April 2. I also want to clarify, my understanding of the way that, that the sunset component of this works is, at the end of a meeting on Monday, Tuesday would be discontinued if this thing isn't again voted for, but a special meeting could be called midweek in order to end it at a time that would seem appropriate if Monday wasn't going to, wasn't going to seem soon enough. It's important to me that businesses are able to go back to business as usual as quickly as possible.
Without using the ability to call special meetings, that, that's correct, Mayor. You could call a special meeting for the sole purpose of, of having the meeting not to pass a resolution, and that would mean that the day following that meeting, this would be repealed.
Right, I wanted to clarify that point. Thank you, Rob. Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts?
Should we vote on the amendment?
Just on the amendment, I think we're going to vote on. I got another amendment.
Sounds good. We've got a motion from Rob and a second from Clint. Carl, give me a, or actually, all in favor, please say aye for that amendment to the date.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Does Carrie, Dave, what is your suggestion?
Well, I think we need to include the word "each," regular or special meeting under the "be" it further ordained. I think Ron had requested that, and I failed to do that in the main motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Rux. All in favor, please say aye to add the word "each" to, replace the word "A" with "each" in the last paragraph before the word "regular."
May I ask for one more change here? I would direct the council to the "and" here in paragraph two, where it says that effective that a gathering of, public gathering of 10 or more people is prohibited, A, where there is not sufficient space to have physical separation, and where CDC hygiene practices to reduce the likelihood of spreading are not maintained. I think that should be "or."
I agree.
And I made that mistake.
Include that in my amendment.
I'll include it in my second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Make that amendment. Does Carrie? Does anyone else have anything to add? Mr. Bill?
I have a question for Ron. I've read this numerous times, and it just occurred to me now reading it again. Do daycares fall under congregate care facilities, which list them under 3C? Or do we want to not include them?
Well, that, those are exceptions, right?
Yes.
I do believe that those should be accepted out of this.
I just want to make sure if it's under congregate care, if that's how it's classified, fine, or if we need to specifically state daycare.
Right. I don't think that it would hurt.
My recommendation is to put it in specifically.
Sure.
And we would say both licensed and license, all licensed daycare. Yeah, licensed daycare.
I'll make that amendment.
Second. Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Lunsman to add the word, or the phrase "licensed daycares" to exception 5C.
I just got a text message that says we are off the TV now that basketball is playing.
Priorities.
Me too.
My question with licensed daycares, would they still have to follow the requirements of 10 or less? Because we do have large daycare centers here in Aberdeen, or would we just, like I say.
We're just saying that, that if you're a licensed daycare, you, you are exempted from, from this prohibition.
Okay.
You would still move forward as usual, and I understand our, our director, Bill, has informed licensed daycares that they can double their permitted numbers at this time, from 12 to 24, I believe.
They made that decision last week, didn't you?
Is that legal with the state?
The state has not objected at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, with no further discussion, why don't, oh.
Can we?
Sorry.
It sure is. What have you got?
Hold up.
The amendment is open for discussion.
I see. Is all of this, the licensed daycare, the "each," is that all part of your amendment? Okay.
We already voted on the.
Right.
Each.
Each.
And or amendment.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right. I apologize.
Need to clear this one off before.
Yes.
So we need to vote to second amendment.
So I'll take a, a motion to add the phrase "licensed daycares" to.
We did that, didn't we? Yeah. We did that, Dave did, and I.
I just need a vote.
I seconded it.
It's my first day. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
No.
I will vote my own aye, and the motion does carry with one, one dissenting vote. Any other discussion on the ordinance? Any other discussion on the ordinance itself as it stands with the amendments made before us here in this meeting? Did you have something for that, Councilman Olson?
I do. I'm not in favor of this version. For probably a few reasons. Number one. I think it would be very difficult to enforce. I think we're showing too much leniency for the seriousness of this event. And and so I'm very much in favor of closing these establishments. Rather than having us try to police them to see if they're maintaining social distancing or. Keeping their groups to less than ten. And so I I'm just not in favor of this version and and I would much rather support version two. Where we are closing these establishments that are at risk to the public.
Councilman Ronin.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your comments and I I agree that this is a this is a, you know, this is a very important issue. We've got. You know, we've we've had conversations here about protecting businesses, but the purpose of these ordinances are to protect the public. We've got we've got people who are. Going to die, probably people who are going to die here in Aberdeen, South Dakota. We've got a duty to our constituents to to protect them. And and that's why I brought this up last week that we needed to move forward with an ordinance. I'm going to support this one. I I'm not, you and I are not far away in in looking at this, Mike. I'm going to support this. But I'm supporting it with an understanding that if if and partly I think that we'll close those businesses. I don't see how. A bar, a restaurant, a casino. Most of these facilities can can operate in a manner consistent with the governor's directions. But if in fact it, we don't see the closings that we expect, I'll be back here asking that we amend this ordinance. And adopt something much more closely aligned with the other version. But I think it's important that we enact something that is going to protect our citizens and I'm willing to give this a a chance.
Thank you for your input. Councilman Ronin, any other comments? Mark, what have you got for us?
I've been on the phone for two days straight. And I'm conflicted. I don't want to close businesses down. And businesses don't want to be closed down. I mean, forced to. I'll I'll read to what Ron mentioned to me. Or mentioned about me bringing up what bars were doing. In order to comply with. The Governor Noem's outline. Okay. They are doing things to help prevent the spread. We always do an awesome job of cleaning. But we've stepped that up as well as removing our popcorn, peanuts, free pizza, canceling our weekly karaoke. We are checking employee temperatures before they come to work, move chairs out of the bar to distance people. And have made our dine in specials available to for to go orders. Out of an abundance of caution, we have also switched our drinks over to plastic cups instead of our typical glass. And there are other bars that want to comply with that as well. And there's also people out there. Casinos that say we need a complete shutdown. I mean, there's. There's so many conflicting opinions. I've been to everywhere and. I I don't know if I can vote for either one of these, to tell you the truth. This isn't really shouldn't be our job. I I don't think we get paid enough to do this. I mean, this should come from higher up and I'm too close to it. It's 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 bothered me. And. There's just. Too many conflicts out there. I don't want to close people. I don't want to close business down. But I also want to reserve the right to 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 discipline those that don't follow the rules. So. Like Rob says. Leave it open for an amendment later. I think we should maybe give the people that have already closed an opportunity to open up again. So that, you know, they can try and get their crowds back, try and get their people back to a certain extent, of course. It's 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 it needs to be fair. Needs to be fair to everybody. And casinos with over like forty machines, I mean, is that going to be a problem? I mean. Is that because most casinos have ten, that's the maximum, but there are casinos that have multiple licenses. Like forty. So. Is that going to be fair to them to have them shut down because there's forty because I mean forty machines?
So Mark, I guess I'm in order to follow what your intentions are, it sounds like you're kind of torn between if you want everybody to close or nobody to close.
Very much so. I'm conflicted and I'm too close to these people. They're my people. I mean, I.
And but the positive out of what I'm taking from what you're saying is that most of the businesses that you've spoken to have done very proactive things. To to help with the spread of this illness. And I've actually spoken to a few of the same people that you've spoken to recently because they brought up that you had you had just left. It was like chasing you around town almost. And it sounded like I'd heard a lot of the same things. People were trying to do what they could. Closure was kind of an obvious, you know, decision for some of them, but not so much for others. Because it was a little bit easier for those people to comply or they were just getting less pressure.
We already had one casually. I mean, Jersey's is done forever. They were just starting to build a clientele. And it was it was getting better. But with this happening, the owner just says, nah, I don't want to do that. It breaks my heart because I was.
Well, regardless of how anyone feels about the illness itself, I think we can all kind of. Agree that we're on kind of an upward trajectory with cases right now. So this is about as important of a time. As as ever for us to be controlling the spread. So. I'm hoping that we'll be out of the woods with this before long and that would be probably a more appropriate time for the businesses that have intentionally. Chosen to close to to reopen their doors rather than immediately. You know, part of most of the problem that we're looking to solve is already kind of solved itself. We're just looking at the smaller smaller pieces of the puzzle right now.
Well, yesterday I was convinced that it was going to be okay. Today it was different. I mean, it's a moving target. I don't know what to do. I mean, I'm I'm, like I said, I'm conflicted and I I don't know what to do.
And then in answer, from the understanding that I took from your second question about the video lottery machines, we're primarily concerned with the number of people. And the cleanliness of these operations. If all forty machines are being used, it's quite likely that they aren't exercising the appropriate spacing. But perhaps if they when the small businesses that I spoke to that would be affected by this. Were kind of asking me those type of technicalities and I said, you know, you're going to have to identify how many people you're looking at and you're going to have to be. Manning your door and insisting no more come in. That's your responsibility. If you start to break these rules immediately, people like the members of this council are going to make it more severe.
So are you saying that if someone has forty machines, he can only they can only have ten people?
It'd be a pretty easy formula, I think, for the most part. There's a six foot separation.
That's right.
There's a radius around a person. There's a square footage of a location. I mean.
Well, there's plenty of square footage. There's plenty of square footage in in these places.
Oh.
So. Yeah, I I'm still I. I got one person saying this. I got one person saying this and.
You know.
I'm torn.
I think you're no different than I I I believe anyone else on this council. This is a situation that we never thought that we would be in.
It's not our job. I mean, we don't get paid enough to do this. I mean, this should come from higher up.
But but we are the ones who are getting paid to do it.
Yeah, I think I think we have a responsibility. If someone from higher up is not going to make the decision, then we have the we have that responsibility.
That sucks.
In our in our state, we're actually very fortunate, I would say, that we aren't getting. On high mandates that are insisting that we have the same.
We have to make the decision to change people's lives. I mean, is that what you signed up for?
Well, we've done it. I mean, been here fifteen years. We've done this over in my tenure. We've done it a few times. Where it it does. It's not a virus. It's some other thing that comes up that we have to make a decision on people's livelihood. So I don't think anyone else is feeling any different than you are. You are closer to the situation. I have a client that has has voluntarily closed because of the obligation that they felt. To to their employees and to their clients. And.
I know who that is.
Yeah, and so. You know, you you have to appreciate that. Those people are thinking bigger than just themselves.
There are others, though, that are struggling and will they'll they'll die. I mean.
Mark, I would honestly tell you from having digested both of these things that version two might be a pretty good. Between the people volunteering voluntarily closing and allowing the little guys to kind of continue to scrape on by. I think that version two might allow you to achieve both of those missions. Councilman Wright?
I I think the only the thing that I'm struggling with a bit has to do with what Councilman Ronin said previously. And that is if 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 we pass the version two. And then there's not voluntary voluntary following and we need to get stricter, then we can become stricter. I think in this scenario, it's kind of. I'm tempted to say we should take the opposite approach and start stricter. And then ease that up after, say, a two week period. Because from what I understand about this virus, the the sooner we can stop the spread, the better. If we just slow, even if. If some are compliant and some aren't compliant in the process, then what we're doing will have no effect. So I'm tempted to to look at these versions and say, well, maybe we take the stricter approach first. With the idea that we plan on revisiting this every week where when we can go to the less strict. Say you can have your doors open, just keep people six feet apart, but initially. In in my mind, it almost makes more sense to take the version one more seriously, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not in favor of that at this point in time. I'm. I think people have a personal responsibility to take care of the themselves. And I would want to give our business owners every chance to step up and 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 survive through this period of time.
I get that. I I completely understand. I'm just saying if if everyone complies except two or except three, then we're going to be in the exact same spot. And maybe that's fine.
Mark, how many how many active bars would you estimate are running it down since you've kept such a good pulse on it?
There's only two open now. I mean, since the closure of Mavericks and and Pounders. The only ones that are still open are Rowley's and the RNA.
And just to clarify, Ron, and on version one, we're not. Closing the business down. They can still do the curbside, excuse me, the curbside and the in the drive through and the carryout. Now that's sort of a business, correct?
RNA wouldn't have anything to offer in that category. Councilman Olson, have you got something to add?
Well, of course, I agree with Josh in respect to starting out with closures and revisiting if if necessary. You know, I've had numerous emails today and yesterday. And other councilmen have as well. I've I've spoke to them and there wasn't. One that was in favor of keeping these businesses open. In fact, they were adamant about the council closing these businesses. Because the emphasis shouldn't be on businesses or the economic impact of our community. We have to focus on the health of our community. Try to save as many lives as we can. And that's why I I want to send a clear message to the public that we're taking a serious look at this. And our health is more important than the dollars right now.
Sure. I know a word that's getting thrown around a lot lately is unprecedented. It's almost like people memorized it specifically for this. And I'm going to have to remind everybody here that it's unprecedented for this city to. Take a business that hasn't done anything wrong in and of themselves and step on their throat. So that's the type of unprecedented activity that I think we need to be careful of. I think most people in this community are doing the right thing. I think we need to continue to encourage that. I think. This will take, you know, hopefully stem off those the remaining people that are just entirely disregarding the guidance from the CDC. And the state. I think it does plenty enough and it doesn't put blood on our hands for the businesses. I know that there's. A genuine concern that there will be a spread of this virus to a great extent. We've got two cases here on the books. You know, should it double or triple? We're looking at four or six cases. When people are throwing around terms like people will die out of this, I think that that we should maybe be curtail that sort of. Diatribe a little bit. Clint, what have you got?
And and I think I think no one here wants to close a business down. Will this happen with this, those businesses that are already on the edge? This may push them. Over the edge a little sooner than they probably would have. The thing is, is you have to realize we have one case. Now we have two. If you start following the trends, this could quite easily become more than five. Once you're at five, you're at community spread under CDC guidelines. Well, once you hit the fifth.
We're at four.
Yeah. Oh, we're at four now. Yep. So we're already almost to the point where Sioux Falls, where all of a sudden it looked like Sioux Falls was. Going to manage and they get a jump in eight. And if you follow the Department of Health models, thirty percent of South Dakotans could get that this virus. That's just under nine thousand people in this community. And we need to do something to stop the spread. And if we do it now, we can shut it down quicker. And we can get back to normal a lot sooner than if we hang on. We're already behind the eight ball. This is going into effect a week possibly from today. Many communities are ahead, and especially Sioux Falls and Rapid City are at least a week ahead. So we're already behind on this. And, you know, I'm at to the point where it doesn't really matter what version passes. We need to pass something and evaluate it continuously like we have been. And keep working. If something isn't working, we need to tweak it. If we need to go strict, let's go strict. It's 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 just one of those things. We need to do something now. So we can get back to business much quicker than if we hold off.
Thank you. I'm a strong no vote on the first one if we're just going to take kind of a straw poll here. I'm curious to hear if a lot of people. Agree or have a it sounded like there was a strong version towards the second version right out of the gates.
Think we got a motion.
Yeah, we already have.
That would be that would be the telltale.
No, no. Is there any more discussion before we take the the vote on version two?
I think. We we're coming back on a weekly basis and even maybe even quicker than that. And I think we can react. To the the current events.
I think that's fair.
I have a question, if I may, for the city attorney. If we come back on. Wednesday at a special meeting and we amend. This language to to enact the other version, would that be a change that would require an additional meeting?
That would be a substantive change. It would require an additional five days. Between the the next reading or the next final passage. I'm sorry. That would be an additional five days because due to a substance a substantial alteration.
Well, if I may, I would just tell you my position. I I quite honestly. Josh's conversation and Mike's conversation have somewhat persuaded me. I I kind of am now, I'm switching my position. I think I would rather start with the other version. And ease off and Clint, I'm not sure if that's where you are. Mark, I'm not sure if that's where you are. And we haven't heard from Dave Lunsman, but.
Dave, did you have your hand up there?
See something substituted.
I'm I'm happy either way. If we want to go stricter, I'm happy with that, too. And then we can always ease stuff off. You can ease it off quicker. The same point, I just want to get something passed in as quickly as possible so we can get our hand on this and start and start moving things. so we can get our hand on this and start, and start moving things in the right direction rather than waiting for things to get out of hand.
I was gonna, I, I'm, I'm conflicted a little bit in my, I'm, I'm going, I'm listening to everybody and I'm trying to make up my mind here, but my question would be, we're, we're talking, if, if we take the stricter approach, there's, um, did you, we say there's currently three businesses that that would affect? Because the other ones have already-
We aren't, we aren't, uh, we asked about bars. I don't know about casinos. Uh, so there's possibly a number more.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I was trying to quantify here because most of the restaurants have already closed and bars have already closed.
And I think that there's also restaurants that have inside dining. I know that for a fact.
And they've tried to maintain six feet and-
Okay.
You know, if someone shows up, what are you going to do? If you don't have room, you're going to tell them, "Go away."
Yeah.
I drove by a couple of places last night that were still open and there wasn't great social distancing.
Right, and Pounders, um, I think was one that I was getting a lot of flack for. And I spoke to Craig and he voluntarily chose to close. So, that's been a remarkably effective tool. In fact, I've spoken with a lot of people. I think most of these people that own these businesses are trying to do the right thing. And I think that if people strongly felt like there wasn't the appropriate social distancing, I think people are making the necessary adjustments to accommodate that.
Yeah, I, I understand the emotions of it. Um, I really do. I have a lot of friends, uh, here and also in, uh, my workplace, which is on the East Coast, actually, as I work remotely. Um, great effects across all the states between here and there. Um, but when you look at, uh, data that's available, um, that predates to this virus even be, uh, before the January twentieth, um, recognition in the U.S., uh, there are some key modeling studies that are useful and, uh, I think if we realize that, um, we've put multiple social lockdowns in place that include things like school closures, that include the quarantine of infected, uh, and family members, and then workplace distancing, that that has, um, proven to carry the day and to flatten that curve. Um, I like the version that we've already, uh, proposed and have the second two because it does allow a balance, uh, between, uh, economic pressures. Um, it puts everyone in specific business categories on equal footing. There's, uh, equity there that allows them to continue to make a living, uh, keep people employed where possible, uh, while still addressing some of the, uh, health concerns. So, I have a strong preference for having the latitude to let people make the good business decisions that have allowed them to be, um, family-owned for decades. Uh, those are smart people doing the best they can and I think we should trust them and let them continue to operate in that way. I think this version does the best job of allowing that.
Thank you. Councilman Lunsman?
Um, I think I agree with Mark the most. This, this is probably one of the worst things that we have to do. But, um, I do disagree. It is our job to do this. Um, if, if we allow this to go to a higher power, which may be a state or a federal, we then lose all control over what we, our businesses are. Uh, and I don't, I'm not for that in any way, shape or form. I think we need to take our own control, our own destiny, and ma- model what we do for what's best for our community, not for what's good for Watertown, not what's good for Rapid City or Chicago or, or LA. We need to take care of our people. Um, what Alan just mentioned, boy, I've been back and forth on this, but I think we have to trust our, our business people somewhat. I think we have to let them do the best they can to survive through this. This is the best balance for me, um, and I'm going to support this because I think, uh, our business people are, are smart people and they know what's best for themselves, for their employees, and what is best for their patrons. Because if they don't take care of all of those, they're not going to be in business anyway. So, for my, my vote will be for this version for those reasons.
Thank you, Dave. Councilman Johnson?
I was just going to add, you know, um, we've mentioned family-owned, but there are a number of franchised operations in our city too. And we've had the, um, misfortune of having some of those closed, those type of franchise businesses, not through, um, lack of good customer care or revenues, but just because of corporate decisions. And I, I worry that, um, if we put our heel on the, you know, the neck of business, uh, strongly here, that, uh, we could see a domino effect, and I'm not interested in seeing that. Uh, I think we will get through this. I'm very confident we will. It'll be a period of weeks, um, and, um, I think this is a smart move right here that, um, just has just enough latitude that accomplishes our most important objectives.
We, we could still go stricter, correct, um, Ron? The thing is, is we, this would still be in place even if we feel we have to go stricter and that went through that next set of channels.
That's correct. If that was the sentiment of the council, I would, I would, uh, recommend that you pass the resolution approving this to keep it in place. And then at the same time, then be doing a, a parallel track with a, with a stricter one, if that's the direction.
Okay.
You mean it, you mean both, pass both tonight? No, no, pass, pass the one, one tonight. And then if you wanted to at a later time, bring in another, you could keep this one in place while you're going through the first and second reading of the other.
Yes, there was a one. Councilman-
Question, um, do we know, has, has the federal government, the state government, CDC proposed closing businesses?
Well, here's what I'm going to tell you. Um, I, I believe that, uh, Governor Noem, when she issued the executive order, did so and used very careful language, uh, that does not require that and would be consistent with the advice she's getting from her, uh, Secretary of Health, the State Department of Health, and clearly from the CDC. Yeah.
Right. So, no one has recommended that we close businesses?
Right, right. A lot of states have taken it upon themselves to do it from the top-down level and we will have to see how, how that affects their state economies. Car, Councilman, Brett Bill? Oh. Nate?
Is that doable?
Yeah.
I, I keep missing your hand.
Do you want to speak, the?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hear me?
Yep, there you are.
Uh, Nate Kessler, um, VPL Lamont Companies. So, we've got plenty of businesses, multiple locations in town that are really affected by this. And, uh, I guess the reason I wanted to just speak quick is just from a, I saw you guys kind of going back and forth on Monday, you know, wanting maybe some more input or somebody here that, you know, is directly affected and can speak to laying off two-hundred-and-seven people yesterday at Mavericks or Deck or whatever that looks like. And we're not in business, we're not open because we're making money today. We're open to pay employees and to keep those people that don't have jobs, uh, or benefits, excuse me, not jobs, benefits or large salaries or whatever that looks like. They're living paycheck to paycheck in the hospitality world, uh, because we don't know what that mental health looks like when we lay them off, they can't pay their rent, all that stuff. So, I just want to speak for all business owners, uh, that I know and that I've spoken to in the last couple of weeks, that just like you guys, this is, this is tough times and there's no playbook on this. Uh, we're in like eleven or twelve states. So, I've been dealing with, with governors coming down Minnesota today, uh, with the, uh, move that he made along with, uh, two weeks ago when he shut all of our convention centers and restaurants down. You know, we had food trucks coming in the back door, turning on the TV and the governor shutting us down. So, I do believe you guys are doing it right and Governor Noem has done it right by allowing cities to do what they're doing. But, you know, nobody wants to make that call because it's a terrible decision. Um, I, as a business, we are taking the health of our community first and foremost and that's why we've volunteered shut down our locations that, you know, we've got some hotels open, but, um, we've got some, some customers that need to stay and are here for, working at three AM or whatever those specific reasons are that aren't, you know, uh, our staffs are allowing the takeout and all that stuff, um, to facilitate those people so that they do have the resources needed to eat and whatever else. Um, but the health of our employees, I, I was watching you on Monday. As a business owner, we're not meaning to put them in jeopardy, obviously. Nobody has that when they're staying open mentality, right? You know, Mavericks were a little different out there because we've got seven dining rooms and, you know, can space, tons of space to, to get past that. And that's why we stayed open as long as we did. But at the end of the day, it was for the, the, uh, the employee to collect a paycheck and to keep them employed as long as we possibly could till a point where it's socially responsible to do the right thing and shut down. And I, I just feel that all business owners in the community, uh, should be able to make that decision rather easily and hopefully it's not something you guys have to, you know, a class-two or whatever felony or misdemeanor. I mean, that's crazy. That's obviously, nobody wants to go down that route. But appreciate the, uh, time and the effort you're putting into this and, and being forthright. But, um, I'd just leave one more point and that's, you know, essentially the fact that the city's not paying our debt service. The city's not paying our property taxes that are due in a minute. The city's not paying our vendors that are screaming down our throats for, you know, being sixty days, whatever that looks like. So, just be very cautious on how that process looks to reopen because nobody here is qualified to speak when it's okay. You know, we can all look at numbers and see a decline, but ultimately, that's the hard part is, when is it okay and who's, who's the, you know, subject to say, "Okay, go ahead and open again." And that, that's the part that I, I guess why I'm here is to make sure that it's in the business hands and they can, they can do what they need to do. So, by option two or one, you know, I think that's the biggest bet for business owners to make sure they can reopen as, as they feel needed and would, you know, be compliant with everything you're laying out. So, glad I'm not in your shoes, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. And I do think that that's a very important point to make. And I think that once we have solid evidence that our nation and/or state are on the decline of the bell curve of this illness is the appropriate time to talk about reopening because, um, that's, I wouldn't say entirely out of the force, but it definitely means that we're in the clear. Councilman Johnson?
Oh, I did have a comment there.
Yeah, could we, could we get you on the microphone?
I can just speak loud if that's okay, rather than-
Send the people on, okay.
I'm not in touch, so. Is, am I loud enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, thank you all for here. I would not want to be in your same position. I am a small business owner as well. I have a hair salon. I did close last week because I was in Washington, D.C. So, I took my own option to close and self-quarantine at home. And when you're in Washington, D.C. and you see a city drop to its knees within four days and then you come here and you see kind of the nonchalantness of our community because it hasn't really hit here, it's kind of scary to see because it's so small. Would you say we only have four cases now? That's not going to be the same in a week. And when I see these ordinances being passed and I, I'm part of a group on Facebook for cosmetologists and salon owners and massage therapists who are all closing their business. I'm sorry, I'm supposed to-
No fake measures.
We're needing direction because coming from Noem's office, she's saying it's not her responsibility to close businesses. Um, Mayor Paul Tenhankin in Sioux Falls says it's not his job to close businesses and it's not your job. But when you're supposed to be social distancing and we're sitting here six feet apart, yet in my salon, I have a person sitting within six inches of me. And I don't know if I should stay open or not. Of course, for me, I closed, but we need that direction to know. It's, it's the almighty dollar that always wins. I get it. We all want to pay our bills. But for the health of my clients and for the health of not just you who sits in my chair, but the person who sits in it after that person and after that person and the eighth person out of my day and here above seventy years old and I didn't know that maybe I picked something up, what's going to happen now? So, we need direction from somebody and what we're being told is it's coming from local now. So, not that I want all salons to be closed because only a couple of us have closed our doors and you cannot social distance. So, if you're being told to social distance, that, that dollar bill is still in the back of people's minds and they're not thinking about the health and the well-being of themselves and their clients. So, I don't know what you can do to help with that, if anything at all, but we need, we need help because these females and male salon owners, they don't know what to do, you know? You feel like you should close.
So, I feel like there was a, an outreach effort among salon owners in the last day. Um, I certainly got contacted by quite a lot and I actually, um, is, is there an underlying message, I guess? I was, it almost seems like you want us to tell you not to operate.
I think that's what it is. I think we need to be told just to close our doors. Because if we don't close now and we risk infecting people that we might not know or getting infected, if we start now, maybe this is going to be ending quicker compared to if we stay open and then this is going to go into the middle of summer. And so, having that definition of saying, because people aren't listening. People are still going to the bars and you can sit by somebody next to you at a bar and tell them that it's your brother and that you've been quarantining with them. We all know that's a lie. They're going out, they're still doing things, they're being part of the public. And if we don't get told that we're supposed to do something, then these people are going to still make excuses to come see us or they're going to make excuses to still go to the bar because it's open. You know, so they, everybody wants to get out of the house or stir crazy after a whole entire winter.
If, if that's your big concern, I strongly feel like you should remain closed.
Uh, for me, I am staying closed. I'm, I'm immunocompromised. So, I am staying closed and my clients, I've been in business for twenty years. I'm blessed to have a husband who has an amazing job and can work from home. I can live on one income. It sucks, but-
But what of the other hair salon operators?
What's that?
They just don't care about their income or?
Well, I care about everybody's, but I also care about the health of our community because we have, I would probably bet some of these people in this room are above the age of sixty and probably are, a lot of the majority of our town's population is an older community. And once that spread keeps going, it's going to take out, I think, more than thirty percent. So, we're just needing direction. And then when it comes down to if we're being told, part of it always comes back to the money aspect.
Yeah, what was, what was the definition? I, I totally forgot the, the word that was being used with everyone that contacted me. The, um-
Some direction?
No, there was a, there was a word that everyone used and I wish I could think of it right now, but it essentially means like, I'd like a handout or some, some reimbursement.
Well, and what it comes down to is, is I have benefits and yes, I don't want to see all these other salons go out of business, but if you're not putting it in a mandate for us to close, if federal funding ever does come through, we don't get unemployment. Ninety-nine percent of the stylists in this town are all self-employed. So, we, we pay extra in self-employment tax, yet we don't get unemployment if we have to close our doors for anything like this. And when you're not posting it and saying that you have to close, that it's up to our own, you know, option to do so, then if federal funding did come available for us, we still wouldn't be eligible for it because you didn't mandate it for us.
Okay, so I want to tell you because I was a little bit suspect when everyone uses the same word to contact me. So, I looked that word up. I checked out what Sioux Falls was saying and everyone else. And then I checked with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, who they said to reach out to. The gentleman that runs the Governor's Office of Economic Development in our part of the state, uh, his name is Peters. He's a great young guy. And he informed me that it wouldn't make a difference if we forced you to close or not. The funding that they're referring to is SBA, um, emergency funding.
Which is a loan, which we don't want loans.
Which is a loan, right.
Businesses.
And he said they're flooded, they've got tons of them, there's no preference if someone's chosen or they're, or, you know, there was circumstances that otherwise. Um, so I, I don't know. I, I feel very uncomfortable adding, um, additional, additional types of businesses to this just so that they can get federal funding. But I don't think that that federal funding is available. I checked with, on your behalf.
But I'm sure it will be. And if we're not listed, then we're still never going to be eligible. We still don't get unemployment. We don't get anything, unlike everybody else who can go to the, go to the services.
I'm, I'm self-employed, just to let you know.
So, wouldn't you love to be eligible?
I would just assume the government not tell production monkeys, my graphic design business, to close on the- I, I feel like you-
But you don't go six inches from a person or touch them all day long and don't know what kind of diseases. We've been trained in, in keeping things clean, but so was a physician who just came back and worked for three days with patients. And how, how many people did he infect when, with no symptoms? It's no different.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, um, uh, the other version doesn't even include hairstylists. This is more of a recreational, what they consider recreational, uh, businesses. You know, so, so some of the, so, some of the, I mean, the problem is, is where do you stop with that?
I understand that.
You know, where do you, what, what business do you tell, I mean, we closed down hairstylists, which I'm, I am not in favor of, but then, you know, there's people that work at the grocery store that are in close proximity to people that are checking out. I mean, they're, you know, we're not going to close grocery stores. You know, so it gets to be really, you know, it's unknown territory. And, you know, I appreciate your comments. I feel for you. I feel for all the small businesses. I work with small businesses. And, um, it's, it's just a terrible time and we-
So in your readings, could you explain to me then if you're supposed to social distance according to CDC guidelines? How does, I mean?
I think I think it comes back to your personal responsibility. You you've made the choice to um not be open because you know that you can't you can't work in that environment. Uh, um, I haven't seen my my mom, my aunt uh for three weeks now because they're quarantined in nursing homes and and assisted living areas. And I understand that aspect of, you know, you gotta, you have an elderly person that comes in. You just don't know what could happen to that person. So I I appreciate uh where you're coming from, but I I it's just a difficult decision for me to um.
I think if we all follow the guidelines of social distancing, we wouldn't be having this trouble in the first place.
Right, yeah.
But that's why we're all stuck in this, you know.
Right.
Quandary of what do we do? And what's right.
Councilman Ronan?
If I may, with all with all due respect, uh, you know, I think under this version, you are closed down. Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings shall implement procedures to ensure social social distancing. There's no way you can do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And so in my conversations with people in your business today, uh, it was my opinion that you are not going to be permitted to operate under this ordinance. And if uh.
City ordinance or that state?
This proposed, the ordinance we are looking at today, I think.
Similar place for public gathering is where you're.
Hold on.
I'm at the end of paragraph one. Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings shall implement procedures to ensure social distancing.
How do you cut someone's hair from six feet away?
Yeah. Okay, okay.
I seem oddly prepared for hired hairstylist being closed. Um, and and like I say, I I I kind of agree with Rob. You know, it's going to be difficult for someone to cut their hair from six feet away and maintain a proper social distancing. I think it's going to be difficult for a lot of casinos to stay open. I'm in a lot of them. A lot of them are small, machines close together. They're going to have two, three machines operating if if they're lucky. Some of the bigger establishments could spread it out. But this, you know, there may be some bars, but how do you get a bar if it's not a family unit? You know, and you can't have two friends sitting next to each other enjoying a drink. You know, it it under this, they have to be from the same family unit. And of course, there's going to be people that don't tell the truth. But there it's going to be difficult for a lot of businesses to operate even under this model. Mavericks might still be able to go on because again, you have seven dining rooms, you can space people, you can limit the number of people inside. But some of those bigger establishments might, franchises have more computer backup through curbside, online ordering, you name it. Um, but I I think there's going to be a lot of businesses that will find it hard to operate even under the guidelines of version two.
Councilman, right.
Um, going back to what um Nate Kessler talked about, it was is difficult, I think it's very difficult for these businesses to make the decision to close their doors because we all know what that means. Uh, people aren't going to receive be receiving paychecks and very difficult on people. But he ultimately, they made the decision to close the doors. And what we're saying here, I don't I don't I don't think any of us foresee this lasting um six months or something. I I look at I look at this as um hopefully a very temporary um situation. When I say temporary, I I I'm hoping it's less than a month. Um, I don't know what's going to happen. None of us do. But let's, I think we all hope for this to be short, short-lived rather than long-lived. And I think the way to make this short-lived is to come at it aggressively off the bat. Um, I can support version two. I can support either version. I I we need to get something out there to give people more guidance. But my 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 only concern, and I'll just state it again, is is if 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 we don't do enough initially, we could be doing a little for a very long time. Um, if we can do a lot initially to stop it, um, we we might be out of the the woods a little sooner than if we um allow. Um, and and I hate even using the term allow people to stay open because that's not, I just, this makes me feel really uncomfortable. Um, but this these times are 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 um are unique. And and I think um if we can do something strong for a short period of time, it may um benefit us in the long run. But like I said, if if version two is the version we land on, I will wholeheartedly support it. Um, but we also have to make sure the community understands how important it is that we follow these guidelines. And if we don't, we're going to renew, we're going to come back to it and potentially make it stricter. Um, and and I think that needs to be known. Um, not because we're anti-business or we want to shut anybody down or want people to lose their jobs. It's we want the community to be safe. And I I think um ultimately, it's going to, we we can't do that from our seats. It's it's going to take the community to do that and to make those difficult decisions. If you're a salon owner and you decide to close, or if you're a bar or a restaurant and you decide to close uh and you think that's what's best for your employees, we all support you to making those decisions. Um, but it's going to take the whole community to come together to 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 get over this. And so either version we pass, I'm I'm fine with. But I I I just know that it's it it doesn't take very many people not following the rules on this to ruin it for everybody who else who is following the rules. And and I don't want to be the guy walking around town, um, giving people class two misdemeanors either. Um, but we just need to get the message out there that this is something that is really important for our community. Um, and and let's voluntarily do as much as we possibly can to fight this.
I think a lot of people in this community continue to do the right thing, have been doing the right thing from the beginning, have been trying to do everything uh that they can to affect their their circle of people and those around them. So once again, I want to applaud the people of the community. And it's not that I don't feel bad for your situation. Um, I know that it's it was a difficult decision to close your business and you're fortunate to have that second source of income. But I literally checked with the guys that dole out, that were told they're doling out, that the gatekeepers of this money. And they said it's irrelevant. Um, it's not. What's that?
I said, hopefully that changes, I mean, from federal, but you know, more will be given to small businesses who have to make this decision. I mean, it's a changing every day. It's new, so hopefully it changes.
Right, but I want to take or heal off the throat of the businesses of this community in every way, shape and form. The last thing I think we should be doing is inventing new um businesses. It was a responsible decision of you if you felt like you were contributing to the problem potentially. Um, but I hate to have someone make that decision for an entire sect of people, hoping that they get federal funds in the future. Nate?
One last thing. The city of Deadwood today uh shut our operations down with a non-ordinance because they didn't want to go the ordinance route because of the five-day period and they wanted to go the resolution route. Don't you guys have the power if you don't see the business owners doing what they're supposed to be doing, enact a resolution that has a file of talk today, you can make those situations known? Or is that not?
Right.
There was a roundtable with the various municipal attorneys throughout the state on the difference between the resolution and an ordinance. And where the effect of an ordinance is essentially to shut a business down, that can be determined to be an inverse condemnation is what it's called, but it's a it's a taking of some sort. Um, or where the effect of of the council's action would be to order the shutdown of a business, that would be a taking. If that is done pursuant to uh the ordinance process, that protects the city as it should. It formalizes the process and gives you the protection for taking taking the measures that were needed in a public health emergency and did so by ordinance. A resolution doesn't give you that same protection, doesn't give this council that protection. That's why I have, from the beginning, have been uh pushing you on the ordinance track.
Thank you, Ronan. Thank you for the suggestion. Nate, does anyone else have anything to add before we take their vote on? Take a look, ordinance twenty-three oh three, COVID nineteen, emergency ordinance number one.
Roll call vote, please. Would that be acceptable?
It's an ordinance, has to be roll call.
Oh, it does. I'm sorry.
Go ahead and give me a roll call vote. Now, we're speaking in terms of uh version two, following governor's executive order, just to be clear. Councilmember Remley?
Abstain.
Ronan?
Yes.
Bunson?
Yes.
Rife?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Yow.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye.
Well, she does carry. We will reconvene on this next week. Councilman Bunsoness.
Uh, I agree with Councilmember Rife um in in the terms of good communication with our uh with our public. And I got a, I got some feedback today from an employee that was pleased with the mayor of Sioux Falls, they're they're um, they're getting information on a daily basis and I think they were pleased with your uh post today regarding. What I'm asking for is can we um have communication to our public on a daily basis? Um, it can come from the mayor, it can come from the people that have been appointed at Brown County Emergency Management as the um the uh communication officers.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to step up my game. In fact, I normally am able to respond to people very, very quickly. And in this case, I've just been inundated with dozens if not hundreds.
Understand, understand, but you know, I mean, is there other also other ways that we can communicate through other than just Facebook? I mean, is there other avenues? You know, that's your profession, so I I would encourage us to be communicating as much as we can.
In fact, Lynn and I have been having some conversations about a new public access channel situation, right? Getting all this. Councilman Ronan?
Would would the mayor please call a special meeting for Wednesday, April one for consideration of second reading of this ordinance?
We'll call a meeting for April first, two thousand and twenty, for the potential second reading of or this ordinance. Anything else?
Five thirty. Carl's going.
Oh, five thirty, I I guess unless anyone has a conflict with that timing.
Mayor, another housekeeping matter. I was going to ask that, so I'm glad the special meeting was requested. Uh, we do need to do the first reading. Need so we'll need to verbally read this.
Oh, is that is that a Ron thing or a Travis thing?
Uh, it could be the clerk, the mayor.
It'd be better if it wasn't.
Housekeeping measure come back here going to be Wednesday at five thirty. You need to go in and change detective date on this ordinance too.
We did that, I thought.
Correct. All the dates that you're seeing up there in brackets, those will be adjusted now. Pretend they're not there. Put in the correct dates in light of what's happened tonight. Do you want me to read that, Carl?
I I certainly can read it.
Is that okay? I'll use my best bedtime reading voice. An ordnance, an emergency ordinance to address a public health crisis by implementing certain measures which have been deemed necessary to slow the community spread of the virus responsible for the COVID nineteen disease. Whereas the city of Aberdeen has the authority pursuant to SDCL sections nine twenty-nine one and nine thirty-two one to adopt ordinances for the purpose of promoting the health, safety and general welfare of the community and to do what may be necessary or expedient for the promotion of health or the suppression of disease. And whereas the city council pursuant to Aberdeen City Charter section two fourteen may adopt an emergency ordinance affecting life, health, property or the public peace by an affirmative vote of at least sixty percent of the members present, which ordinance shall automatically stand repealed as of the sixty-first day following the date on which it was adopted. And whereas an outbreak of the COVID nineteen disease, which is caused by the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-two, the virus, has been confirmed in more than one hundred countries, including the United States. And whereas CO COVID nineteen is a severe respiratory disease caused by the virus transmitted by person-to-person contact or by contact with surfaces contaminated by the virus, in some cases, especially among older adults and persons with serious underlying health conditions, virus infection can result in serious illness requiring hospitalization, admission to an intensive care unit and death. And whereas the World Health Organization, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Secretary of the US Department of Health and Human Services have declared the outbreak of the virus causing the COVID nineteen disease a public health emergency. And whereas on March thirteen, twenty twenty, President Donald Trump declared a national emergency in response to the global pandemic of COVID nineteen. And whereas on the same day, Governor Kristi Noem issued Executive Order twenty twenty oh four declaring a state of emergency in state of South Dakota due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas cases of infection from the virus causing the COVID nineteen disease have been confirmed in the state of South Dakota, including one confirmed case in Brown County and cases of community spread are reasonably suspected to exist. And whereas the CDC and health experts have concluded that social distancing is necessary to slow the spread of the virus causing the COVID nineteen disease. And whereas social distancing is a method of slowing down or stopping the spread of contagious disease by reducing the probability of contact between infected persons and those not infected in order to minimize disease transmission. And whereas the CDC issued guidance to state and local governments and all citizens recommending social distancing steps to prevent community spread and guard against the COVID nineteen outbreak. And whereas many states and communities across the country implemented the CDC recommendations by ordering the closure of bars, restaurants, food courts, gyms and other indoor and outdoor venues where people congregate until the public health emergency is over. And whereas many Aberdeen residents, healthcare organizations, businesses and religious organizations voluntarily instituted social distancing measures recommended by the CDC, but social distancing is not being practiced by all persons within the city. And whereas the failure to successfully implement social distancing will likely result in higher numbers of infected individuals and has the potential to overwhelm the capacity of the city's healthcare providers. And whereas it is important that control measures be taken to reduce or slow the spread of the virus in order to protect the health and safety of the city's residents, especially seniors and those with underlying health conditions that make them particularly vulnerable to the COVID nineteen disease. And whereas, consistent with the CDC guidance, Governor Noem issued Executive Order twenty twenty oh eight on March twenty-third, twenty twenty, providing social distancing directives to every South Dakotan, any enclosed retail business that promotes social gatherings, all employers, all healthcare organizations and all local and municipal governments. And whereas the city council exercising its authority pursuant to Aberdeen City Charter section two point one four finds that the rules and regulations contained within this ordinance are necessary for the prevention and spread of the contagious virus causing the deadly COVID nineteen disease within the city of Aberdeen. Be it ordained by the city of Aberdeen as follows. Number one, effective twelve oh one AM on April second, twenty twenty, any enclosed retail business operating as a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casino, coffee shop, recreational or athletic facility, health club, entertainment venue or other similar place for public gatherings shall A, not permit ten or more people to be in the enclosed facility where there's where there is not sufficient space to have physical separation of at least six feet between persons who are not immediate family members or members of the same household. And B, discontinue business practices incompatible with CDC hygiene practices designed to reduce the likelihood of spreading the COVID nineteen disease. These businesses are encouraged to adopt and promote practices that do not involve public gather gatherings in an enclosed space, including but not limited to takeout, delivery, drive-through, curbside service and off-site services. Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings shall implement procedures to ensure social distancing and operate in compliance with federal and state health guidance in order to prevent the spread of the COVID nineteen disease. These businesses may submit such procedures to the city health officer for review. Number two, effective twelve oh one AM on April second, twenty twenty, any public gathering of ten or more people is prohibited. A, where there is not sufficient space to have physical separation of at least six feet between persons who are not immediate family members or members of the same household. Or B, where CDC hygiene practices to reduce the likelihood of spreading the COVID nineteen disease are not maintained. Number three, the prohibitions in this order do not apply to the following. A, places of public accommodation that offer food and beverages for off-site consumption, including grocery stores, markets, retail stores that offer food, convenience stores, pharmacies, drugstores and food pantries, other than any portion of such business which would be subject to the requirements of paragraph one. B, room service in hotels. C, healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, licensed daycares and correctional facilities. D, crisis shelters, homeless shelters, churches, soup kitchens or other similar institutions. E, any emergency facility necessary for the response to the current public health emergency or any other community emergency or disaster. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall be repealed on the day following each regular or special meeting in the city council, unless the city council at such regular or special meeting, by resolution approved by a majority of the members present, special meeting, by resolution approved by a majority of the members present, affirms one, the continued existence of the public health emergency, and two, the necessity of the social distancing measures set forth in Paragraphs 1 through 2 above, and extends the ordinance for the day following the next regular or special meeting of the city council. This ordinance shall be subject to recurrent affirmances by a resolution and extended thereafter, but in no event may this ordinance be extended beyond 60 days from the effective date, and shall be automatically repealed on the 61st day without further action of the city council. Nothing herein shall be construed to prevent the city council from adopting another ordinance necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Be it further ordained that a violation of this ordinance shall be a class-two misdemeanor. Each day a violation of this ordinance occurs is considered a separate offense. Be it further ordained that pursuant to SDCL Section 9-19-13, this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety, and shall become effective immediately upon passage. Travis Shawnaman, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. Good reading. If we have nothing further, I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A motion from Bunsoness and a second from Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.